...the session for November 20th. Order, I need a roll call, please.
Please, the mayor will present with the exception of Councilor Matthews.
Please excuse. Please rise to the plate of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a presentation this evening, and we welcome back Cheryl Kelch to join us to talk about what's going on in the paper and give us an update. So the floor is yours, please identify yourself from the left and on the right.
Cheryl Kelch, it's a new balance. Good evening. Great to see you all again. You have a copy of my first quarter report in your packet. I'll just briefly highlight a couple of points on that report. I included quite a few statistics that were recently released on the Oregon wine industry. You can see that the Oregon wine sales are at the highest amount of growth of any state in the United States, at seventeen percent. And there's still a lot of upside potential. That number can be misleading because Oregon only has 1.1% of the entire distribution of wine in the United States. But again, just really speaking to the fact that we're continuing to grow, that industry is very, very healthy and continues to be on a positive upswing. There are now 726 wineries in Oregon. The majority of those, over 500, are in the Willamette Valley ABA, which is between Eugene and Newburgh. And then, North Willamette Valley, which is our area, continues to produce the most wine tonnage, at seventy-three percent of all the wine grapes grown in the state of Oregon. I also mentioned that the wine display, I serve on the board of the Willamette Valley Wineries Association. We did quite a large installation at the San Jose Airport, and the display, the picture of that is in your packet. I am looking at how I can get, transport that. It's being sent back to Oregon because our installation is over at the airport, but I'm checking into how I might have that transported here and perhaps contact the cultural center or someplace that I could display that for visitors as well as our residents to see, because it was a pretty spectacular display. The FAM tours, you can see from the summary, continues to be very, very strong.
Cheryl, would you define FAM tours for the people that are not familiar with that term?
Yes. FAM tour stands for Familiarization Tour, and they're tours that we do with members of the media, as well as members of the travel trade, tour operators, for example. And we basically give them a tour of the area, highlighting what's really great about Newburgh. And so, it's not uncommon to have probably one or one or two a week, starting in May all the way through October. In fact, on one occasion in first quarter, we had two different FAMs going on at the same time. And so, for a staff of three people in the chamber office, that means two of us are out showing people around. So, but again, just shows you how popular the area is and how the popularity continues to grow. With that, I will turn it over to any of you that might have any questions.
Yes, thank you. I do. Have any councilors have any questions or comments? Councilor Johnson?
I just want to thank you again. These reports are always so great and lots of statistics, and really, when you compare them to the older reports, you start seeing a picture. So, thank you so much for the work you put into these. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Patrick.
I have one, if I may. I want to take you to the first quarter budget report. And you have a deficit in the net income. Can you, what do you attribute that to?
That just means that I spent more money in tourism than I had, than I had budgeted, or that was on track for first quarter. So, but the, any difference in that money spent is, comes out of the chamber.
Okay.
So, budget.
Thank you.
And if I could just add on to that, sometimes there are opportunities that come up within a quarter, and so I might choose to spend a little bit of extra just to, because of the particular opportunity, so.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Councilor McKinney?
I'm going to ask the question that the mayor just listed the time here, is that we are Chehalum Valley Chamber of Commerce, vigorously supported by Newburgh, and I noticed that in this particular point in time, the city of Dundee is at zero, maybe by the end of the year, they might have, you know, contributed some there. I know that there are a number of other cities that enjoy the Chehalum Valley Chamber of Commerce and what they do or whatever. With us being overrepresented and them being underrepresented, with you and your board, do you talk about that? Do you, do you seek more cities to be involved?
We have not actively sought participation. I would think, I would think within our area, you've got Dayton, you've got Carlton, of course McMinnville has their own tourism organization, and then, of course, you know, Dundee. And Dundee will, I think have already received their check for this year, it just isn't reflected in this particular report. And so, but we have not actively gone out to, I guess it would be Dayton and Carlton that would be.
St. Paul, I think is represented in your group as well, are they not?
Oh, St. Paul, yeah.
St. Paul, yeah.
And St. Paul doesn't have any lodging properties, really, to speak of, which most of the money is coming from lodging tax. That's where Dundee's money is coming from, that's where the money funding, our contract is coming from lodging tax.
Yeah, but it is a visitor center.
Yes.
That this, that this report is talking about.
Yes.
Is a visitor center. So, we do direct people, you do direct people to St. Paul for.
Yes.
One or more activities, yes.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Cheryl, the only reason I'm bringing it up is that at the TLT meeting that we had at the, at the cultural center, just not very many days ago, there was a number of people that talked about, you know, it's the Chehalum Valley Chamber of Commerce, maybe better represented by Newburgh's Chehalum Valley Chamber of Commerce in relationship to the TLT monies and all of the other things, and how other localities and communities are underrepresented in terms of the fiscal responsibilities that it would bear. I took it from, from some of these people, it was a little bit irksome for them to think about that. I tried to dissuade them of their being overly concerned, but then, at the same time, it seems like Newburgh is bearing all of the responsibility here for this type of thing, of which they do derive, you know, some type of benefit there. I'm not finding fault, I'm just saying that in every report that we see, that discrepancy still is there. And I wonder if it's a concern of your board or not? Or do you have a plan to, you know, to do that? Because I'm glad you're there, I'm glad you're doing that. I've been a member of this council for quite a while, made, made sure that you guys were solvent to be able to do what you needed to do or whatever. I'd like to see these reports change in the future about more communities doing their share of what's here. So, with that said, I wanted to, to represent the concerns that I heard at the TLT meeting there, because it represents a great deal of money in relationship to some of that. Like I said, I'm not finding fault, I'm just saying that over, over the years, that number of other communities doesn't seem to change along the way. And maybe they don't care, or maybe they haven't been solicited, or I guess maybe what I'm looking for is some type of assurance from you, that there'll be some type of methodology in the future to have those communities better represented. I mean, we're up to, what, 140,000 here? And you have one community that participates at 2,500. And I think that's it, right?
Right.
Yeah. So, that being said, enough said.
Councilor Bacon?
I, I take a different point of view than that, because the more we can get people to do, even if it's outside the area, and they keep coming back here at night, we're getting more money. So, if those other places don't have hotel motels or bed and breakfasts and aren't getting money, they're still helping by giving the travelers something to do, and they stay longer. They can stay one night, or they could stay three, and if they have more to do, they'll stay. So, I appreciate that part of it as a travel, you know, when I travel, that I, the farther out I go, I still have my central, my central base. So, that's kind of how I view that. But, thank you, and I'm excited. I still have one tiny little piece of truffle butter that I made last year, so I'm ready to get in line for my, for my truffle.
Yes, I did leave you a little bit of propaganda. The Truffle Festival is coming again, and they have moved their weekend, they're going to be the, over President's Day weekend. And again, strategy is that if people have a three-day weekend, we're hoping that those out-of-state people that travel to this, that they'll stay a couple of nights, or at least an additional night as a result of a three-day weekend, so. And then, secondly, unrelated to tourism, but more related to our local economic, economy, just encouraging all of you to shop locally this next weekend, so.
Councilor Johnson?
Um, I, I, the, I think other smaller communities do care about tourism. I think they, they would love to put money in, but if a smaller community doesn't have a hotel and isn't collecting a TLT tax, are we expecting them to use their general funds and not fund libraries, not fund things in their own communities so they can throw a couple grand into a TLT fund? I think Newburgh is blessed to have the opportunities we have with the transient lodging tax, and if our efforts are looked at instead of us carrying people, but as an investment into this area, who's to say that in ten years, there couldn't be a hotel in St. Paul for the rodeo? Or who's to say there couldn't be more Airbnb dollars out in the rural area that we cover that couldn't go into this? I just, I think we need to be, I understand the frustration, but I really think that people up here on this council need to be careful with how they characterize other communities who are also interested in helping with tourism, but don't have the same opportunities we have.
Follow on, Councilor McKinney?
My comments were not a characterization. My comments have nothing to do with TLT. It has everything to do with representation of our Chehalum Valley Chamber of Commerce, our efforts to support the Chehalum Valley Chamber of Commerce, and has nothing to do with the TLT. The TLT fund is plenty healthy, we'll be able to do that, but there is a discrepancy when it comes to the chamber, not the TLT funding.
Thank you. I think that you, and you told us what our little deals are. The thank you is, is there a particular day?
That is, well, Fri- Friday, of course, is Black Friday, and Saturday is Small Business Saturday. It's a national campaign.
So, this is the Small Business Saturday?
Yes, and so, the downtown merchants, along with the Chamber of Commerce, have partnered to promote shopping locally, and every time you make a qualified purchase, if somebody who's participating in that, then you will get an entry in a drawing, we'll be giving away three gift baskets, drawing for three gift baskets for those that participate.
Good.
So, they're drawn.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. No further questions or comments? Thank you, Cheryl, I appreciate it. City manager's report, please.
Mayor and council, Johann, your city manager, in your email, you've gotten what I'll just pull out a few of the bullets of the activity over the last two weeks. Not quite as busy as it was two weeks ago, but I don't think you could match a couple weeks ago. First one is, we attended the Austin Family Foundation presentation on the needs of Yamhill County. I sent each of you an email. Please read at least the executive summary of that report. It's got some really good stuff about where, you know, the Austin Family Foundation, which is, you know, our hometown foundation is going with a lot of money, and what they've seen is priorities. And basically, they have some economic development priorities, one of their three, which Doug and the city were, you know, on top of and following through. The second one is some early education for children, which is real interesting, something for us to be engaged with, we're not directly involved with that. And then, the other one is arts, which is kind of interesting, that they followed up with the tourism strategy and the downtown strategy of recognizing arts as a big deal. And they both describe the opportunities and where they might get involved. Also attended downtown coalition board, and a couple of issues there. One is about the use of Second Street parking lot. So, it's where a lot of employees park, there's business people, we have folks that live in the downtown are using that. So, we're still of the opinion that we have enough parking in the downtown area to meet the needs. Sometimes you, we can have special events, or sometimes in the days when it gets, you know, very full, and also occasionally we get somebody that might be there, like there was a trailer selling firewood, that needs to have some special attention. We've done that, we're looking at the signing both of the Second Street Park and the city's Waterwise Park, to make sure that people know how long you can stay there, and there's no 24-hour parking. However, that comes to a challenge where people that are living in some of the apartments. So, this will come back under another venue to the council as we talk about that. Met with Waste Management, we're going down the road, and just a reminder about glass recycling voluntary program. It'll probably kick off in March, but we'll see education coming out in January and February, telling people there is, glass recycling is coming for a monthly charge, but you can opt out, not even have a rolling recycle bin brought to your house, or you do it for one month, and then you figure out, well, and it's about a little over $3 per month that if people choose to go on recycling. So, then they'll do that for a time period, probably about six months, and I'm sure it'll be part of a discussion when they come back for asking for a renewal of their franchise. Been working with Steve Olson and VFW about banners, these are those veterans banners. There's a new installation that's going to go up in the Chevrolet dealership, so right on Portland Road, so we'll start seeing a little bit of that. We're working on a meeting, the mayor and Doug and, and council president McKinney, if you're going to be there, are scheduled to meet with Representative Suzanne Bonamici tomorrow. City Club is at noon, if you're in town, this is one where you might really want to go to, if you, if you can break away and go for that, it's $10. But you'll hear her speak, give an update about Congress, and that's pretty interesting in itself, and then she ties the stuff, how it affects Newburgh. And then afterwards, the mayor, council president, the mayor of McMinnville, two superintendents from the area, Robin Baker, PCC and Chameca, the presidents, are going to meet with Representative Bonamici and talk about some local issues, right, for Newburgh. And then, I'm working with Councilor Essen, look at, taking some of the ideas about transit and some things to specifically ask the county to consider, so we'll do that over the next couple of weeks and get that up. And then, even though we don't have any money, and it is on our council priorities for emergency preparedness, Mary Newell, the police department, has put in a homeland security grant, we're trying to get some cargo containers and fuel bladders as part of a homeland security grant that then we'll use, and we can use them at different churches. So, that, and I encourage you just look at the notes, if anyone has any questions.
Any questions or comments for the city manager? Councilor Essen?
I'm astounded at how much work we're getting done. It's amazing, and I appreciate everything the manager does and the staff that supports us. It's an incredible list, especially when we get into later on in the meeting tonight, I think that can be even, said even more forcefully, and thank you.
Thank you. With that, we move to council appointments, and I, in this particular case, I am asking for your ratification of my appointment of Adam Lundstrom to the Citizens' Rate Review Committee for the balance of the term. Blair Didway is vacating because of family and job commitments, so that will be the balance of the term, November 20, 2017, to June 30, 2018. And I'm asking for your ratification, so I'll make that as a motion. Second? Then moved and seconded to approve the appointment of Adam Lundstrom to the Citizens' Rate Review Committee. Is there any further discussion? Call for the question.
Uh, Mr. Lundstrom.
Councilor Johnson?
I know Mr. Lundstrom personally, and he is a very high-quality individual, we are lucky to have him.
Good.
That's all.
Question has been called for, is there anybody, any further discussion? None appearing, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. None appearing. You will notify Mr. Lundstrom, Matt, please. Pass 601. And with that, we move to public comments, and I do have a couple of people that have signed up for public comments. And both have been here before, so I'm not going to go through my litany, other than to remind you that you would please keep your comments to a five-minute period, and I invite you to come to the table when your name is called. Turn on the mic, the silver button on the right hand, state your name, and discuss what you wish to discuss. With that, I'm going to call on Rebecca Well, excuse me, Rebecca Wallace first. Almost had you somebody else.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city councilors. Please, manager. I wanted to come today and talk about the Newburgh-Dundee Police Department's Citizens' Academy that they put on. I had the pleasure and the privilege of attending that academy for the year 2017, and I wanted to tell the council how helpful it was that this program was offered to the community. Each person was able to go on a ride-along throughout there, it was a 10-week course, we went every Tuesday. We learned about laws, rights, and responsibilities of both the citizens and the police officers. We also learned about the difficulties that the police officers face on a day-to-day basis. We were able to fire the same firearms that they do on a weapons range, courtesy of the Sherwood Police Department and their range there. We were able to participate in reality-based training with the officers. That was an eye-opener as to what the potential risks are and how trained our police officers are to handle those risks. Reality-based training taught us that police officers have to be able to raise their awareness very rapidly, and then also reduce that level just as fast if the situation doesn't warrant that high level of awareness. Many citizens that participated had very high adrenaline responses that stayed with them until the training was over. It was a four-hour training that we did on a Saturday. We were able to utilize some location here in Newburgh, and that was pretty fantastic. In the end, this program really was an eye-opener for many of us, and again, I just wanted to let you know how valuable I think that the training was, and thank you for your time.
Any questions or comments? Councilor Bacon?
I, I also got to go to the academy, and it was really, it really, from a policy point of view and from a budgetary point of view, it was extremely eye-opening. I've tried to talk Doug and, well, I'll talk to Matt and see if maybe we can have a Public Works Citizens' Academy and a, because I think it really, I did fire and I did police, and I think when you have the opportunity to really understand at that deep level of the work that people do, and bring citizens in where they become aware, it, it's, it's, it changes you at the end of the day. Okay, there might, you know, Matt's not going to let me shoot a gun, or chase after a bad guy, but, you know, it's still, it's still interesting to see what, what the staff does from, and from a policy decision-making. It's, yeah, it changed me.
Any other comments or questions? Councilor McKinney?
When's the next one?
I was told spring. Yeah.
Well, if it's 18 months, I might be dead by then, so.
Can I add something?
Yes, you may.
I also want to share with you that we were able to also fire the less lethal force weapons that they have, so it's an M40, M40 caliber, and that was pretty intense, and it was great to see that we have also tasers. We have five new tasers, I think, in the department, and some of the older ones, but it's going to be great when we can get to that point where we have all new across the board, and it's great to have those non-lethal force options in our police department as a citizen to know that, you know, they're available.
Thank you. Chief, I think you get an idea that it's really appreciated, that you take the time, the staff takes their time to put these on, and I think I can speak for the council that we encourage you to continue that. And you're looking pretty bad, so it's making some progress there.
It must be in November.
It must be. All right. The next person I would like to call is Crystal Case, please.
Hi, I'm Crystal Case, board member for Newburgh Animal Shelter Friends and a volunteer at the Newburgh Animal Shelter. I handed out, you should have this kind of, just a report. We just wanted to, we haven't been here in a while, and just wanted to let you know how we're doing. I won't go over this in great detail, but you can see our adoptions are increasing over each year. So far, this year, we've had 485 adoptions. We've taken some feedback, and now that we have three staff members, we've been able to expand our hours, so we're open Wednesday through Saturday, 11 to 6, instead of the few hours a day that we were open. And then, we're able to take stray dogs every day for extended hours. And then, earlier this year, HVAC system was completed, and we did pass the county inspection for the kennel license. Some other things that we're doing for fish and Y cap, we, monthly, we give them dog and cat food, we have excess. And we did a microchip clinic this summer, which was pretty successful. And I think most of you have been down there, but if you haven't been down there, we invite you to come visit and see all the changes that we've had, and I think that's it. Any questions?
That's Ramita. Any comments or questions from the council? Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a good report, thank you, I appreciate it very much. And with that, we move to the consent calendar. Councilor Bacon?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
That was a tie.
It's like a race.
We'll give it to, we'll give it to Councilor Corey. You okay with that? Is there any further discussion? A question has been called for, there being no further discussion. All in favor of adopting the consent calendar signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. None appearing, the consent calendar is adopted. 601. 601. And with that, we move to a public hearing. This would be a legislative hearing. And this particular hearing is dealing with a supplemental budget, and I will be inviting Mr. Matt Zook up, and this is a Resolution 2017, 3390. It's a request for approval of supplemental budget number one for fiscal year 2017-18 as described in Exhibit A. And with that, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and council.
After I ask my questions. This being a legislative hearing, I'm going to call for any abstentions, conflicts of interest, or objections to jurisdiction. None appearing? No.
Yeah, before you, a resolution outlining a few minor operational changes and a few highlights I would like to point out, and just for the viewing audience, that we are requesting that the adopted budget be modified in the form of this resolution, supplemental budget number one for 1718 budget year. And in addition to, you know, as I said, a few things such as personnel adjustments due to collective bargaining agreement for the police department, that's the general fund. The street fund, what we're doing is recognizing the transportation utility fee revenue. Now that the, at the time that the budget was passed, the ordinance had just been approved early May and then finalized in June. It was, at that time, we'd already prepared the budget, we're moving well along the case, and so if we decided to wait and let that pass, let that cool off, and then we implemented the TUF on the September municipal services statement, and so now we're anticipating 10 months' worth of revenue in this fiscal year. So we're looking at about $950,000 approximately. That will come in as revenue, and then the revenue that comes into the street fund gets moved over to the street capital projects fund. And so what we're doing is taking great care to separately articulate the way that the TUF is being spent. And so at any given time, you could look at the financials or call me up and ask, you know, what, how much is being spent on the TUF so far? In August, the Eighth Street paving project was one of the primary ones. Jay could tell you other specific ones, but that paving, pavement maintenance project was completed, as well as a couple other add-ons from the wastewater and stormwater funds. So it's good news. The fee's been implemented. We're seeing that revenue come in, and so this budget takes care of that. The other highlight, just a couple of other smaller items, the affordable, the Economic Development Fund has some affordable housing trust funds carried over from the prior year. Same with the Transit Lodging Tax Fund. Because those are dedicated funds, specific, you know, held in those funds for specific purposes, it's important that we roll the funds over so they can be reused the next year for an intended purpose, and so each of those funds have particular formulas or restrictions on those funds. So both the Transit Lodging Tax and the Economic Development Fund have some adjustments in those as well. So relatively minor, we don't generally do a supplemental budget this time of the year, but because of the TUF and other things, we wanted to get those implemented and keep operations running smoothly. So I will report that there, in light of the conversation about having a finance systems academy, there is not a money-making machine in this. I might include that in supplemental budget number two, so we can carry that on. That's my report, Mayor. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Zook at this time? Counselor McKinnon? Have we had 90 days of TUF or 60 days when you're getting ready for the receipt of the November billing? Have we had 90 days of billing yet?
We've had three, yeah, three months' worth, September, October, and November. You're welcome.
Counselor Essen?
I'm just wondering if you have an update on, are we going to be able to sign up for averaging?
Yes, we are. In fact, thank you for asking. We have been working on that. We've, from a technological standpoint, it's doable. We've talked with our software, had multiple conversations, and we're, we have a trial environment that we're running the calculations in. What we've found is the more you get into the policy, there's a lot of what-ifs, there's a lot of scenarios that we're trying to anticipate that I didn't, you know, really see going into this. Northwest National and PGE have some language that we borrowed and looked at, but there's a lot of decisions that we will be coming back to the council with for just a work session, just to say, here's what we're proposing that this program look like. Do you have input or feedback as to how you would like to see it? And that's twofold. One, because we know that you hear a lot of comments from folks about the municipal services statement. We also know that the council has utility billing policy, and that was something that we actually rely on to, as we're talking to folks and saying, hey, this was a policy that was set. There are certain policies that the staff adheres to that was last brought to the council, I believe, prior to my coming here, and so we want to implement that, the equal pay program. What can I call it? Something like easy pay or equal pay, and then bring that back to the council and incorporate that into the utility billing policy as well. So, yeah.
Just to give you an example of how this has worked for me with PGE, I had some PGE bills that ran 250, 260, and then some that ran much lower than that, maybe in the $50. When I signed up for their averaging, my bill went to $73 a month, including, I never had a high bill, and so I decided that it was so much fun, I increased my use, and my usage went up to $93 a month. So I'm hoping that works out for the city, but also I'm hoping it works out for the citizens, because they won't see this $300, $400 a month bill that I'm hearing on Facebook that they're getting in even the $1,000 ones, and I appreciate what you guys have done to try to work that out. But this will make it a little easier on the citizens, and then if we happen to have a rate increase, it won't hit them quite so hard. And I don't know how that'll work.
Counselor McKinnon? You have a fiscal need that's on a monthly basis that runs for 12 months. Is there an unanticipated shortfall using equal pay on a monthly basis, depending on your monthly obligations? Is there an unanticipated shortfall maybe in a given period of time or month or whatever? I'm struggling how that is dealing with this particular resolution, but go ahead and follow on on that. The question? I'll talk to you private. Questions on the record? Go ahead and answer it.
Sure. If I, if I hear the question that you're asking about basically a cash flow issue on, in regards to equal pay, will that cause an issue? I don't think it will at this point, because both the water fund, the base water fund and the stormwater fund, they have reserves, you know, reserves that are on hand both to meet the debt service payments, as well as operating, we put the contingency into the budget to allow for, you know, an adequate amount of time for cash flow purposes. So at this point, we're not anticipating that that would create an issue. But I understand. It's a good question.
Other questions? I have nobody signed up to provide any testimony, either pro or con, on this, so I'm going to open and close the public testimony portion. Do we have any outside written communications that we've received?
No, sir. I have not received any relevant to this resolution.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And unless there are further questions by staff, we're going to go ahead and have you give us your final recommendation, final comments, vice versa.
Final recommendation is to adopt Resolution 2017, 3390, for the approval of supplemental budget number one for the fiscal year 1718, and I have no other comments.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and close it, and we'll go into deliberations. Pleasure to the council. Counselor Corey?
And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2017-3390.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2017, 3390, approving the supplementary budget number one for fiscal year 2017-18 as described in Exhibit A, and you have reviewed Exhibit A, I will assume. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, the question's been called for. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same sign. None appearing. Resolution passes 601. Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it very much. And with that, we move to new business, and we have a, some information on the Newburgh 2030 Project Update, Land Conservation and Development Commission Policy Agenda, and the next steps.
Thank you, Mayor. Doug Rux, Community Development Director. So as I indicated back in August, August 24th, to be exact, is that I would come back and give you an update where we're at with our discussions with Department of Land Conservation and Development and the Land Conservation and Development Commission about adding to their policy agenda, technical fixes to Chapter 660, Division 38, which is the simplified UGB process. So on September 21st, the commission did include in their policy agenda to do some technical fixes to Division 38. So as I've outlined in your report, they broke it into two segments. So the first is the minor issues, which there are three of them, clarifying exclusions of publicly-owned lands such as school parks and privately-owned lands, updating the list of measures to accommodate needed housing found in the simplified rules, and updating employment projection tables. So in their work schedule, which is included as Attachment 1 in your packet, they look at, identified, starting that work in January, starting officially rulemaking in March, and then completing the rulemaking in kind of the June-July timeframe for those minor issues. I still need to have some additional conversations with staff about the issues recommended for further evaluation, because that has several of the items that we identified as a concern when we went through the build-able-lands inventory regime, I will call it, through Division 38. So what else has occurred? We have applied for a grant, so we brought something forward to you for dismissal of that grant. We ended up requesting $56,500, matching that with $56,500 of our own funds that have been budgeted for this fiscal year, to move forward with the Division 38 process. Of course, that moving forward contemplates that they get the technical fixes done to Division 38. So the minor ones, as well as concerns I have with some of the recommended for further evaluation. So I've talked with staff, and we're going to try to set up a meeting, hopefully between Thanksgiving and Christmas, to have that discussion. The other piece, as you may remember, is we identified some technical issues in the assessment data based upon the methodology. And the city manager had some conversations, the county assessor and I have had some email conversations back and forth. I talked with our former consultant, Echo Northwest. So now I'm in the process of trying to work on a contract with Echo so we can get them on board to go have the conversation with the county assessor to see if we can rectify some of that technical stuff, which would resolve a number of issues on what's partially vacant and what's vacant. You may remember, we found properties that are tax-exempt, and they don't have an improvement value, and thus they show up as vacant or partially vacant, but they're fully developed with buildings and improvements on them. So we're working on those two pieces. So our next steps, kind of the end of the report, is continue to work with DLCD staff. Hopefully, I'll be able to come back after the first of the year with another update. Just to give you a heads-up, a worst-case scenario in all of this is we don't get a grant, can't get some of these other issues to be identified, to be addressed as part of the simple stuff. We'll be having a conversation of should we revert back to the Division 24 process, which would require doing an economic opportunities analysis and a housing needs assessment. We're not, we're not there yet. I'm still cautiously optimistic that the Division 38 will work, but we know that there's some things that need to be fixed, and I'm also cognizant of time passes by. When time passes by, we lose momentum, and I'm trying not to lose that momentum, both with council, with the planning commission, with our committee that worked with us for a year and a half, almost two years on this, as well as staff. That's it.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Rux? We'll start with Counselor Johnson and Counselor McKinnon.
Hi, Doug. I, the Division 24 process, that economic opportunity?
Analysis.
Analysis, thank you. Is that what includes, I'm just, hmm, that includes the industrial land supply?
Yes, it does.
Okay, great, thanks. I'm just trying to remember.
So the economic opportunities analysis is looking at our employment lands, our commercial and industrial lands, forward what we think we need for a supply, and so there's a, there's a technical process to go through. The housing needs assessment is the one that looks at your residential land supply, and so you want to do those in conjunction with one another to make sure that they are woven together, they fit, and the numbers actually play off. Number of houses drives population, population drives certain percentage will have a job within the community.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McKinnon? Are those anticipated expenditures in the present budget? Say like, for instance, if we didn't get the 56.5, do we have the money to proceed with these other studies and analysis in terms of Division 24?
Yes.
Budgeted?
Yes.
This year?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? None appearing? Our next item is a, an update on the council priorities. And with that, we look to the city manager. It's all right. You can move up here.
I won't bite, so. So, Mayor and council, this is, so it's the first time we've done this council priorities this way, and I'm glad we have some time, but we don't need to fill up the whole night. It's, it's a forma in that, and I think the council had asked when we were doing either the annual evaluation or the last time of retreat, of coming back on a regular basis to look at our priorities, have action items entered, see how we're doing, and then if we need to make any, you know, corrections, we can do that. So tonight, what I'm going to do is that, and they don't all know this, but each of the department directors can go, as you have questions in each one, don't feel like you have to ask a question just to ask things, but please, this is a time for some conversation back and forth and saying, oh, what about this? So on your little dais is this, a little card that Don Karen made up for us. It's council priorities. Play it with you, you know, so that we'll try to, you know, remind ourselves what the priorities is, and I know Counselor Johnson tonight said, well, where's that sit on priorities? That's, that's a legitimate question for all of us to ask whenever something new comes up, and we'll figure out if it makes sense to put it up here in this, this room, even though this room is used for a lot of other things, too. The bold items, with the exception of some of Doug's areas, it didn't, didn't get all those bolded. Those are the things that changed since we put this first together, and we will take the status from this point on, take the council priorities and put it on our website, too, so that we, you can look at it any time, or we direct people to say, what's the city doing and how are they doing it from month to month? And then when we get to it, we'll make one correction to the annexation vote. The numbers in there are wrong, and I sent an email to you. We had the, kind of the losing side that was on there, but in the email to you have the changes. And then if, as we go through this evening, if you think about... And then, if, as we go through this evening, if you think about how you'd like to change this format, you know, either the written part, this is readable, not readable, I like something else, or when we do the presentation. So, I'm just going to go right through the stuff, and the first one is really public safety... So, it's police, city manager, finance, and IT. And so, we'll have the chief, and Matt and I try to answer the questions. And then, if you've got any... Basically, this is the communication side of it, of the upgrade to the antenna, the radios at the station, or radios for police and dispatch. We've had a lot of action on that recently. The big part will come during your next council... Two meetings, right, Matt? Councilor session is the budget or the next one?
The next one.
It's the next one. So, at your next council meeting in the budget workshop, we will detail what we're recommending of how to pay for the communication upgrade in addition to budget items. We've had some movement on antennas. Jay can answer that question on there. So, we're moving forward. We're in the process, we've signed the contracts with WACA and Motorola, and the next step is for you to say, okay, this is how, or you're going to agree or give us new guidance as to how we're going to pay for that. So, any questions about that first goal?
I do, if I may. I would like to hear from the council. What is the significance in 1.1 of no fiber availability?
It's the one person we don't have here tonight, which is Dave Brooks, but the issue is related to standalone and getting the new technology from WACA to us. You can... We can have our information on dispatch come over the air, which is the way it does now. It can come by lines that are on poles or underneath. And in the new technology upgrade, what has been recommended, if we wish to keep a standalone dispatch system, is to get a fiber, dedicated fiber link back to WACA. And so, as of this point, it's been cost prohibitive for us to do that.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Any further comments on that one?
Okay.
Are we taking these a goal at a time?
Yes, sir.
All right.
If that works. The second one is about the city streets, and I'm going to just turn this whole thing over just for the updates because there's two people to talk a long time, Jay and me. So, we'll both control ourselves tonight, but Jay can tell you where you're at with TUF, and then if... Yes, sir. And if there's any finance that we heard about, Matt can answer that. Jay?
A transportation utility fee, as our finance director had spoken earlier, we have been billing for three months now, and the revenues are about as projected, about 1.2 million a year is about where we should end up at the end of the year. The projects that we did, we, last summer, did a large project behind Edwards Elementary School, rebuilding a portion of eighth, and we did a bunch of slurry ceiling projects up in the northwest corner of the city. Got caught late in the summer with a little bit of wet rain and stuff. We've still got a couple of streets that we still need to finish next year up in the northwest section of the city. Moving forward, in the next couple of weeks, we're going to have a five-year capital improvement project planned for you, listing out the streets that we'll be able to complete in the next five years, with an emphasis on trying to get the streets maintained that are maintainable, and then obviously, you know, reconstructing a portion of them as, you know, per the TUF ordinance. So, with that, we've been driving around, there's six of us that's in this group, and we have been traveling around in groups of two and coming up with lists and surface treatments types, because, you know, you go all the way from cracked ceiling all the way up to digging the whole street out, right, and fully reconstructing, and a myriad of things in between. So, we'll have that. What we're going to do in December is to take that five-year CIP and to put it into the pavement model that was last updated. Well, we had a full model done in 2014. We had some minor updates as we were going through the TUF process, but we're going to go in with the five-year capital plan, insert that into the pavement model, and then it's going to tell us what the shortfall is, or we might not have a shortfall, right? It all depends on the projects and the cost analysis that we're doing, because we're actually doing, since we drove through, we have a high level of analysis on the roadways and what the surface needs are versus then 2014, it was more of a generic model. So, we're starting to dial it in closer and closer. I'm anticipating we still are going to have a funding shortfall with the TUF. I'm thinking it's probably going to be about, what we were speaking of, about a half a million a year, as spoke to you some time ago. So, in the first meeting in February, I'm coming back to you folks with the results of, one, what are we doing for the next five years, the whole list of streets, we'll get them out on the website, and then also what the new pavement condition analysis, the computer model is saying, and then the potential of discussing some alternative revenue sources to maintain the pavement condition index is the instructions I was given, God, what was it, a year and a half ago, two years ago now, something like that? So, I can answer any questions.
Counselor Johnson?
Mr. Harris, you mentioned putting the five-year project list on there. Are those projects going to be just TUF-related projects, or are they going to be... Because if you look at the website now and you hit current projects from the transportation utility fee page, it just goes to a list of all of our projects that we have from Public Works. Are you going to delineate this is, these are TUF-funded projects and these are, you know, other funds, or what's your vision for that?
Typically, we wouldn't, and the reason is, is because we have a couple of different sources of money. I mean, we could separate them out, but it would be difficult, you know, on a project-by-project basis because we have the transportation utility fee, we have the state gas tax, we have the new state gas tax from what, 2012, the House bill, and then we also have the federal funds exchange dollars that are coming in. Those are all monies that go in to the street fund to fund projects. So, I can talk more to the finance director about that, and if we can specifically call out TUF projects to stray gas tax projects, but typically, in the project funding world, we're taking all the revenue sources and mixing them together to go complete them.
Follow on.
Follow on.
And I appreciate that. My concern is, is that when we went through that TUF process, we did make some statements about how that money was going to be used and how it wasn't going to be used. And so, even if it's just a list of, we're doing this street, hey, we're using this much TUF, and we're going to have other monies in there, I just want to make absolutely sure that everybody involved in that process is comfortable that we're doing what we said we were going to do. And it's not that I don't trust you guys, it's just that, that process especially, we called out, this money is just going to black on streets or to plan to put black on streets, and I want to make sure that we follow through with that.
We can look into trying to delineate that a little better. The transportation utility fee does require that we give a yearly update to council, so it would probably be at that time, we would say how the funds were spent and what they were spent on.
Counselor Esson?
Yes, as you may remember, I sent some questions having to do with the Greens neighborhood, and I understand that you were actually coming out with an evaluation of all the streets, not specifically, and that at that time, we'll have an understanding of what condition the streets are going to be in, and how you're setting your priorities. Is that correct?
Counselor Esson, that is correct. What we did is came up with a list of streets that would be potential for the next five to seven years of candidates. We weren't on the streets that were a cul-de-sac that's completely exploded with zero, near zero traffic volume, right? Those are the ones that are in year eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 sort of thing, right? So, we pared out a bunch of streets that were really low volume and needed complete reconstruction, because those are budget busters, right? Then, we take the remaining streets and come up and find out what type of treatments are needed for each one of those streets, and went and drove all of them, and came up with our findings. So, we have... One of the main goals of the very front side of this program is to try to get sealants on as many streets that we can save now, so they're all not exploded on us, right? And still meet the TUF, you know, the 30/70 thing that we did, 30% of reconstruction. And so, the goal is, though, is once we get a lot of streets preserved, the majority of the money is going to be reconstruction dollars at that point. I'm hoping that in the next couple of years, I'll be able to show to you guys when we're determining the curve of just maintenance work versus reconstruction work. And I'm thinking it's somewhere around year three of where the slurry seals and the cracked ceiling and all that's starting to go away, and we're digging out streets and grinding in lane and doing the heavier lifting type of projects. But, so the goal is to try to get a lot of these maintenance projects up front in the first part of the program, and then move to just full reconstruction in the second part of the program. So, the second thing that you had sort of been wondering, the Greens streets are in pretty fair to condition. There is, is it the Greens Drive, this first street, right when you drive in, the first, I'd say, half of that, it needs some treatments and some cracked ceiling and all that. There are some other streets that are candidates for crack and slurry sealing that will be coming before the Greens, just because of the level of cracking is at a higher level, if you see what I mean. So, we're weighing a lot of things like that. So, the particular sealants on the Greens streets might be pushed out a little farther than ones that need it like right now, today, sort of thing. So, we're making a lot of calls like that also.
Follow on. Follow on.
Yes, and I met with some of the neighbors, and I think you're correct, like, for instance, my particular portion of the Greens was built, I think, in 2009, as far as when the streets were put in, and some of the earlier streets were built in 2005. So, those streets have been, had 12 years of chances to deteriorate, plus the fact that the grades and the water underneath and, you know, all the things that are happening over there. So, some of them are looking like they might have some needs. Where my house is, I'm good to go for another three or four years, but, and I don't know, it's kind of got done in phases, so like, it's just maybe certain portions of it look bad, and the rest of it looks pretty good, and I'm sure there's places elsewhere that are much worse condition, and I'm perfectly understanding of that, but that's what I'm going to have to explain to 300 homeowners.
That's correct. The goal is, is to preserve the streets that are in the worst need for a slurry and crack seal right now, and then the streets that are in better condition, hold those off a few more years until we can get caught up and get over to them.
Continue.
So, Goal Three is about the annexation. We had an election. It passed. We had an election on the charter. It changed the charter. Next step is a couple of legal ones in front of Washington County for them to approve a TVF and R Board, and then we'll be working on the actual annexation agreement that talks about all the rest of the employee records and their benefits, making that transition, and about the facilities. So, that means both about fire stations and the, our trucks. Goal, any questions about number three, the annexation?
Counselor McKinney? Do you have a anticipated date for these discussions about the completion of the annexation?
It's in the report there of when it is. We're going to, we'll be doing those a week from today, that week, and it probably could take easily a month and a half for us to come up with an agreement and work through legal kit back to you. And all this is to implement for July 1 of next year.
And you're referring to the dates of November 28?
The annexation agreement.
And the 12/17. Thank you.
The next one, Goal Four, not a whole lot happening at this point. It's one of our goals, we'll continue to work on it with the NERF system. We've had some people that have left the city that were NERF employees in their positions, if they're not part of the union. They switched already over to PERS. So, any question about that?
I have one quick question.
Counselor Johnson? I mean, Counselor Corey?
When we had our subcommittee meeting, there was discussion about offering the employees the option of converting over to PERS. Did we ever offer that to those employees that were in NERF, or were you just going to drop that?
No, we didn't drop it, but we're still working on it. It has been presented as part of the union negotiations with the largest group, which is the Public Works, not gone all that favorably, but we're still working on it, and we're in negotiations right now with the Public Works. Goal number five is technology. I don't have Dave Brooks here tonight, but there's a technology plan and a chart that was also attached to that. Looking for a lot of opportunities. I don't know if there's anything we can answer for any of those questions. That might warrant even a larger conversation soon. Goal number six is the five-year financial plan, and Matt, you want to say anything?
The financial plan, long-range financial plan, has continued to progress nicely. As you know, that we had a subcommittee a year ago, the work that they did has not died on the vine. In fact, I've attended a couple of opportunities to do long-range, to attend some seminars in long-range financial planning, and the city, in fact, just last week, the COG held a long-range financial plan seminar for a lot of smaller cities, and what we're doing is a lot as well along the road of what other cities are up and trying to do. So, we're well along the path. I think when we come back to you on December 4th, you're going to see part of the product of that in a, in the way we present options to you on how to address future funding needs. So, the models continue to help us be well, you know, well aware of what's coming down the road, or at least what looks like something needs to be addressed rather than getting caught one year in advance. So, what we do anticipate being able to do in the future is, at this time of the year, be able to release kind of an annual update to the long-range financial plan, and then that shapes the budget, the annual budget cycle that we get into in January, February, March. So, it's been an ongoing project. When we initially started, it was, I looked at 17 different funds, and the model's built for 17 funds. You're going to hear about the main one, the general fund, so it was an ambitious endeavor to tackle that many funds, but again, we built the model so that it was comprehensive enough to give us the big picture and to take in as much as we can, and we're doing, we're continuing to refine that every month, so.
Continue.
Mayor, the next three goals are primarily in Doug's and the community development departments, and he's talked a little bit about some of them tonight, but I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, Doug Ruck, Community Development Director. So, I gave you a briefing, kind of where we're at with the urban growth boundary. So, we've been working with DLCD on the technical fixes, got LCDC to agree to those technical fixes and impart, so we'll work through that process over the course of the next seven months or so. We've applied for the grant, what I call Phase Two of our UGB expansion process, so to hear by the end of the calendar year if we've been awarded funds or not. And then, I mentioned that we're having conversations with the county assessor about the dataset for... the data set for, uh, that they keep on real market value and improved value on land. On goal number eight of, uh, encourage affordable housing.
Uh, can we come back on, is there, are there any further dis-
Sure.
-comments or discussion from the council on goal seven? Go ahead, Dave.
Uh, goal eight, encourage affordable housing. So, the first thing is, uh, we will be coming back to the city council on December 18th. We'll have another work session, and there will be an RCA on that night as well, looking for direction. What of the list from the Housing Newburgh group do you want staff to work on? So, this all fits underneath the goal. Uh, the real changes, uh, that have occurred is where we originally had six, the first six proposals from Housing Newburgh, we now have seven, eight, and nine. So, that's the expedited review and permitting. Um, the public street standards, that one's, could you narrow the rights of way? Um, I've expressed, we just adopted the TSP, so it's kind of going back and relooking at the TSP, spent five years, put together. And then the last one was the system development charge of deferrals of the loans. And so, you now have nine in front of you. You've seen those once now, you'll get to see those again on December 18th. The group also came up with, uh, for, like, some alternative things to consider in the future, and so that's the last column under goal number eight. Um, so, substantial completion on final plastic, increasing time, complexity and maintenance requirements for the stormwater treatment, so those regulations. Um, increasing building height limits, uh, outside of the C3 area for residential, and sharing utility lines. I think there's a couple that got cut off too. There was one about allowing, uh, accessory dwelling units in homes, so you could have two kitchens within a home. Um, so, those are some longer-term things to consider. The real focus right now is the first nine that'll be coming back on December 18th. That's all I have on that one.
Nonappearing, continue.
Goal nine, riverfront master plan. This is short and sweet. We are still in negotiations on our statement of work. We hope to have that resolved by the middle of December, end of December, and then there's a process that ODOT will have to go through internally. So, we may not be back with information in front of you on an agreement until the end of January, first part of February.
Councilor Johnson.
Um, just because I'm obsessive, uh, Doug, the, um, the urban renewal district that's been talked about in conjunction with that, has there been any work toward that, or are we kind of have that on hold until we have that a little more?
I have that on hold at this time. We have funds budgeted to do a feasibility analysis for an urban renewal program. Um, but until we resolve some of these other issues, you, I don't think it'd be prudent to go out and start that. It's a timing issue. We really thought, at this point in time on the riverfront, we'd already been six months into the planning process, and we're literally six months behind schedule.
Okay. Thanks, Doug. Continue.
So, Mayor, and, um, on that one with the urban renewal, probably the next time we get together, if you wish that, to be, you know, called out, I mean, we have it in our budget, some funds there, but we can put that in saying, oh, gosh, the next time we come to council priorities, if we still think it's priorities, that we put that kind of language in.
Follow on?
Follow on.
Um, for me, it's just, it popped in my head. It's not at the top of my radar. It's just, as we move forward, if you just shoot me an email, that'd be great.
Okay. Um, goal number 10 talks about emergency preparedness. There's been a great deal that's been happening, a lot of it without any money. So, this has been money, like cash for activities, but it's taken staff and we're doing it. And those are detailed in there, so I would encourage each of you to look at, if you haven't had a chance, look at the progress of just, of things with staff, of us. We are meeting on a regular basis. We're doing some things with churches. We just, um, Mary Newell at the police department just submitted a, an intent for a grant to get some, um, fuel. We thought, this is something that we think could get through the grant with Homeland Security, of some cargo containers, both for us and potentially, you know, other partners, and fuel bladders. So, we're, we're, we're doing it slowly but surely, and just praying that there will not be a major disaster in the, the process. But, we're out, meeting with people and encourage them to be our partners. So, it's detailed there. Um, probably the best thing I can do is if you have any questions on any, any of those items, either tonight or in the future, we can answer. And one kind of fun thing that Rose has, she's, Rose is gone, she's completing, and we have it for, uh, December 15th, her goal to finish it of a video of the mayor doing a, kind of a plea to churches to say, please do your part, get yourself planned. That came out of a meeting with two different churches that said, would you have the city ask us to prepare ourselves? So...
Mayor? I do have a question. On 10-2, uh, you indicate we've received emergency operation plans. Uh, what's the value of Twalleton Hills Country Club? As it relates to the city of Newburgh?
I don't know the answer, and we put it in there. Um, I don't know. And I, I'm not even sure if it was Twalleton, oh, there.
Yeah, that error was supposed to be picked up in an edit that I caught, and it never got revised. But, the country club is a great place to play golf. I don't think they do a lot of emergency management there. But, we have been working on getting, um, plans from, uh, Providence, Newburgh, and , uh, school district, CPRD, and others, um, so we can compile those and, and look through them, so we're familiar with what age, other agencies in the region are also doing.
Those were noted, thank you.
So, Mayor, thank you for reading, catching.
I was just curious.
Yeah, no.
Did they have something that I didn't know about?
The new helicopter.
Oh, is that what it is? Okay. Yes, Councilor Essen.
Um, might be, I, I know at one time I had talked to Don Clemmons with Chahalem Parker Rec, and they had agreed to, uh, uh, do some support, be a place where things could be stored, and you're all aware of that. So, I, I thought maybe that had something to do with it. My question was, um, during the TVF and R negotiations, I spoke to, um, the representatives and asked, uh, since they had, uh, a plan in place for the rest of TVF and R, would they be willing to, you know, since we're, we're now represented by TVF and R, and they have emergency planning, uh, would they be willing to support us on that? And they said yes, so I don't know, um, if that's been talked, if they've been talked to, but I would suggest that that might be a place to go.
Mayor? Uh, yes, we have, we've talked to them. Some of their stuff is really up here at a, one over, you know, 50,000, um, kind of view of it. But, yeah, they're part of our planning process. Sometimes what happens to those is that, and I think what's missing, is getting down to way, where we are right now, getting, drilling it almost to the, the neighborhoods, and also getting out of the government, including, you know, police and fire are very good at what they do on emergency. A cascade one is going to completely overwhelm all of the police departments and all of the fire departments. So, what we've been spending our energy, you, you don't, um, forget the, the role that police and fire have it, but if we're to survive and to kind of, um, come out of it, it's, it's on a, a much more, a lower neighborhood level. And, and their planning, like most cities and counties and everything else, stays up here. There's a few that are working the other level. So, that's what our goal is, what we're trying to do.
Continue.
Next one is also community development, and it's got a lot of pages to look for. Um, so, Doug?
Um, so, the list is too long to provide to you on what we're doing on the economic development strategy. We meet on a monthly basis, and it's a multi-page document, uh, but that gets updated every month. But, we're working on, um, industrial retention activities, recruitment opportunities when they pop up, uh, commercial side, things in the downtown, commercial businesses, again, retention, attraction. Then we've got all of the workforce that's going on, and the chamber is leading that portion of it. But, there's a lot of discussions that are occurring within the community, with organizations outside of Newburgh, countywide, as well as organizations statewide on, uh, workforce development, talent development. And then on the tourism, which is 11.3, um, noted here that we have the destination development marketing grant program that's out. So, the TLT committee has heard presentations, they'll be coming back in December, uh, to score, rank, review, and developer recommendation, which will come back to you in January. The small grant, we went out for the first solicitation, we had no responses, so we reopened that and went out on November 15th. It closes on December 15th. Um, so, I took my list and sent the email out to everybody again, and we're anticipating we're going to get responses this time. Uh, 11.2, the downtown plan. So, you've taken an action tonight in regards to the Butler property. Uh, so, we'll be getting an appraisal, and that'll lead to an RFQ and RFP process. Uh, the food cart pod is something that was in the economic strategy in downtown, so that's up and it's running. And we've got our first apartment project downtown at the corner of Second and Edwards, and so that's moving forward through their final construction. I don't see any construction yet, but they finished the land use process. Uh, continuing to talk with hotels about opportunities in downtown. Uh, we were just getting ready to kick off, uh, discussions about, uh, the west end, the Mill District, uh, and those opportunities. But with Steve's announced retirement, I'm kind of have to rejuggle the schedule on that one, see where we're at. So, there's a, a lot of stuff that's going on, on the economic development side.
No questions or comments, okay? Councilor Essen?
Um, just to say that when I spoke earlier about all the things that were being accomplished, then I wanted to thank everybody. I was probably looking at this section as much as any other, but that's just amazing. And thank you.
So, Mayor, so, thank you for that. Most of that is, is Doug and community development doing the stuff. With, you know, we have these other partners like Cheryl and others, but it's really driven by community development. And yes, we know that the loss of, of Steve Olson, both his history, institutional knowledge, and his work ethic is tough. So, Anna and Doug, we're all trying to work, try to find somebody that can never really replace it, but that can fill that hole. We also have one other staff person, and we get to the final goal about transit that affects it, that we have a staff person that's been on extended leave, and he was the person that was assigned to do, um, transit support for Councilor Essen. So, we're, we're, that one is, uh, we know there's some time-sensitive part of that when I talk about that one, that we're just trying to figure out how to do it. You know, with, with the stuff that you just got in there, that Doug's talking about, and, and there's always a danger just overwhelming, you look at all these things. So, if you need something, when people are asking you about what's going on to the city or, you know, how frequently people say, well, what's the new building, or what's the economic development stuff? Pull out these pages in your home, if you have it on your computer, and, and in a few minutes, you can look through there, and you can feel absolutely very good about yourself of saying, here are the things that we're doing. And while you're doing that, then you can come back and give guidance or stuff of, of saying, yeah, you're doing a good job, but what about this, and are we going the right way? That's really the whole purpose of this priority. And not to just do it once a year, when we do these updates, saying, are we going the right place? Are we spending the right time? Gee, lost another person. No, with no more loss, you know, no one else to lose in that department. But, when you have that changes how, how are we making adjustments to it? The next one, I'm just going to leave it for tonight, and that's the community visioning. We, there is, there are some items that have been done in there, but that is really for us to come back the next time. We've not done a lot on the community visioning, um, process. If you have any comments you want to add in that, we can do it. And then the final one is improving the transit system. So, we just mentioned that we do, you know, we, uh, so Councilor Essen has taken the, the city side on that committee. We had the transit folks come here and make a presentation. We need to get back with them of some real specific ideas of things that we do. We, we think we have several items, uh, everything from shelters to route consideration, new ideas to get them to respond to. So, they're just at least looking at, as they get this additional money, which isn't huge, but $2 million, some of that range, that we put our ideas through to them. There'll be more to come forward to you by the next meeting. Um, one thing that we've done is we moved some staff around, is that I've agreed to support Councilor Essen as he goes through, because there's no one left in, in community development for now. But, as we get other planners in that, role could change, so. And Mayor, that's all I have, other than to hear your, um, comments. Leah is here tonight, because I asked all the directors, and while she doesn't have council goals, she does have one of our most important facilities, and she'd be glad to give you an update of the, the improvements that are going on at the library, so that feel like she hasn't wasted, or that she has used her time wisely this evening.
Well, now that you've brought it up, I guess we better hear from Leah.
Well, that was an introduction.
State your name.
Uh, I was, I was getting to that, Mr. Mayor. Leah Griffin, the library director. And, uh, while I'm not, the library isn't specifically on any of these things, a lot of these things are still connected to what we do at the library, to the connections we have to the community. Uh, one of the things that we're going to be working on this year as part of our strategic plan is some surveying and connecting to the community. We've done some training of my staff on a, a library project called Project Outcomes to actually find out what it is people get from the services that the library provides. And one of our new, um, library board members has a lot of experience with surveying and connecting with community and that type of thing. So, we're really going to be taking advantage of that and, and really pursuing that. Um, and we are in the midst of doing some remodeling, which is changing our workflow, and it's going a little bit slower than we'd all like, but you know, when you change how people have worked for the last 20 years, and you're going to turn it upside down, takes a little time to get everybody pulled together and, and, uh, working together on that. So, we're, we're moving, moving along. And just a reminder that it is less than two weeks away to the community tree lighting, Saturday.
You want to bring that?
December 2nd?
Sure.
Okay. Saturday, December 2nd, we will be lighting the tree. Um, I just posted on Facebook right now that the tree is sitting over in Jay's yard. He sent me a picture, not his personal yard, at the Public Works yard, and...
The tree smells good. It's a blue spruce, big blue spruce. Oh, blue spruce.
So, what do you, like, suppose, uh, the, the, yeah, 33rd year of the, of the, uh, 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 the, uh,
Would, would you speak just a little bit about the, from 4:30 to 6:30, the kids' craft sale? Very interesting, some are very interesting. Councilor Essen, Councilor Johnson.
I just wanted to give us some institutional knowledge about Leah. Leah is one of the ones that started the bus system, and could you tell us a little bit about how that worked, because you were telling me, and I thought that was interesting.
Councilor Johnson?
Leah, I'd just like to let you know that you did have a point for being here tonight, you are on the list, with the kid craft sale, you are taking a long-range approach to economic development, so thank you very much, and I'm sure Doug thanks you too. And one last comment from me tonight, one last comment from me tonight, is I, I know we usually talk a lot about planning and building, and they are always doing a ton of stuff, but I have been so impressed with the rest of our staff, especially Jay's crew, I had a issue with some sprinkler system leaking, and these guys came out and figured it out for me, and, and I'm not nearly as smart as they are, and I have just been continually, I, I look at the work we've done with the Tuft and the five-year financial plan, and what Truman has done in legal, and I just, I am so, since this is Thanksgiving week, I am so, so thankful that we have the leaders that we have on our city staff right now, I think we are completely blessed, and I know we ask a lot, and I think you guys all, all step up, and, and I don't think Newburgh would be the place it, it would be today if it wasn't for your efforts, so thank you very much, that's what I'm thankful for.
Here, here. Yes. Councilor McKinney?
Unofficially, it should have been one of our council goals, to expand the hours of the library, we've talked about that for years, I don't know why it doesn't appear on this card, but Leah, many of us are very supportive of that effort, we've asked the important question, the guy sitting next to you is supposed to come up with the number of dollars per hour to keep it open, I haven't heard, haven't, that's you, Matt, I haven't quite heard back from him, a clarification on the bus shelters that are sitting up there at the reservoir.
They are.
City property, county property?
They, they were purchased through a grant by the county, and so unless Jay knows otherwise, I would assume they are still county property, but they were, our share of them were brought out here, and, but then it, it fell apart in terms of getting permission to put them up, both ODOT, both private property, all of those kinds of things.
Follow on? Follow on? If there are allotment, did we pay to have the other ones put up, or did the county pay to, to put them up, or the shelters that are existing, excuse me, so was it our responsibility?
Well, whoever's it was, we've taken it on now, we're agreeing as part of our language back with the, the county transit, that if you go on their website now, you'll see a series of where the bus stops are, and so what we're asking them, preliminary, but what we're asking them is saying, okay, get us the signs, we'll put them up, let's figure out which area we're going to put the shelters up, we'll put them up, we'll work with them to figure out how can we clean up the NAPS one, and potentially put a cover over the, the Fred Meyer, so there's a number of things we, we can do, and we're, we're going to do with them.
Follow on? Follow on? Do we have the money, do we have the resources, do we need to raise the money, or where are we at?
For those kind of items, we, we've got enough to do it in and out, with Russ and, and the people there, the bigger issues will be when we start talking about any changes to the system, and that's a separate, you'll see that shortly, within, I want to say, two meetings from now, you'll see it.
But we will get them up?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that very much, and I think staff is getting an idea from those on the council, the comments of council members of how valuable you are, take it to heart because you are valuable, it is, it was, they are very strong and good comments. Council business, Denise, do you have anything further? All right, and I had one here about the tree lighting, and thank you Leah for taking care of that, I do have a couple of three items, if I may, how many of you are still going to the local government dinner next week? On the 30th, okay, so we're all intact on that?
Yes, the only one I never heard from was Matt Murray, so it's all been confirmed, I just, it's all paid for, it's all taken care of.
Thank you. We had, and Joe brought it to my attention, we have another one that you might want to plan for, because it's going to be, it'll be after our next council meeting, but you might want to plan for it, and ODOT is, together with our, the local chambers, and I say that in floral, are preparing what will probably be a celebration of completion, they started out thinking about doing a ribbon cutting, but they're backing back, back a little bit and saying, we're going to do a celebration of completion for the bypass, and the event will be on December 18th. It's scheduled for 2:00 PM, with the arrival of guests and VIPs and shuttles and what have you to begin at 1:15. The master ceremonies will be ODOT Director Matt Garrett, Governor Brown will be keynoting, and has been confirmed, and they're looking to have representatives from our congressional delegation there, and may have some other speakers, and it'll probably be in the general area of where we had play on the bypass, but you will, instead of the parking being on the gravel, you're going to probably be parking on the bypass because of rain and the conditions of the, of the ground, so there will be directions on how to, how to get there, get onto the bypass, and, and they'll have directions for parking on that, and that's being worked on, on that, so 2 o'clock on the 18th, what is it, the old term, be there or be square, and then for ribbon cutting, as the discussion progressed through the Parkway Committee, it was said, well, we're not opening it up, because their, their notifications that they put out, that we have in hand, and what you've seen in the paper, is although we're doing the celebration of completion, the bypass isn't open to any vehicles yet, it will not be open to vehicles at that time. So when it is open to vehicles, then we will do a, a smaller ribbon cutting type of thing, and then maybe have an offset, off-site, offset, off-site reception area that people could go to, that, that would be a, a different kind of a celebration. Now, the contract, as I understand it, and Joe and Scott can help critique me on this, is I understand it, the contract is to be completed by December 31, 2017, so that's what they're talking about. However, and in government service, you always have however, we had at least two days, apparently, of no work, it was, no work was authorized during the eclipse. Now, do the contractors get those two extra days added on to December 31? ODOT cannot answer that, so they are as yet not willing to commit as to the actual date that the bypass will be open for vehicular traffic. Our fantasy is it'll be by not later than December 31, that's what everybody keeps chirping, but ODOT still is willing to, you know, reserve that little backpedaling, at least for two days with the bi, eclipse, and whatever else may be in there that the contractors may want to put forward. So that's my report, December 18th, 2:00 PM, and you're encouraged to be there. Councilor Essen?
I just wanted to pass on what Dave Hoggert said, which is, we weren't able to complete the bypass because of sunshine.
I'm not going to say anything on sunshine right now. Is there anything else to come before the council? Thank you. There, very good, I will, I will entertain that before I'll entertain your motion. Happy Thanksgiving for everybody, and I think we have much to be thanked before this year, and we've tried to express that at different times to our staff tonight. Been moved, and? We are, Jerry.